Okay, I'll call to order the Sparks City Council Meeting of February 9th, 2015. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Bybee.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if you've all standing for your indication speaker, Pastor Brad Dronus from Sparks Church of the Nazarene.
Father, we thank you for a chance to gather once again, to put our community into our hearts here in this place, and Lord, we pray for our leaders today. Pray that you will give them wisdom and insight as they lead our community. Father, I thank you for their involvement, their sacrifice, and their expertise, and, Lord, may you give them the insight and wisdom they need today. And, Lord, we want to thank you for the rain and for the good things that are coming our way in our community as well. And, Lord, we just pray that you will help us to be wise stewards of all that you trust us with, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Brad. If you were me standing for the pledge, Julia, would you lead us, please?
Please join me.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and ever being and testing for all.
That would be the stand. Okay, I'll open up the public comment. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Oh, right here. Okay. Maria Perez. Come on down. Just go ahead and grab a seat and then turn on the microphone and just give us your name for the record, please.
It came on for you.
There it is.
Good afternoon. Maria Perez, 137 LaRue, Reno, Nevada, 89509. Good afternoon, council. My name's Maria today, Maria Perez. I am with the University of Nevada, Reno. I am here to invite the city of Reno and all of you to our second annual Exploring Diversity Conference on the UNR campus, which is to be held on February 26th and 27th of this Sorry, I wrote something for you guys. So, basically, the purpose of our conference is to start conversation on issues of equity and, of course, cultural diversity, as it's been coming up in our community, et cetera. So, we simply wanted to extend the invitation to the city of Sparks, seeing that we kind of concentrate our efforts on the other side. And I am in contact with your communications, head of your communications department. I am asking for some advertising assistance. So, that is it. Yeah, we'd love to have you there. We'd love to have your constituents there. It's cost-free. All you need to do is register at the length it's provided, and it's open to general public, professionals, faculty, staff, students, et cetera. We just want to spread awareness in regards to cultural diversity on the university campus and within our community.
Thank you, Maria. Is that two full days, 26th and 27th?
It's actually the full day. It will only be February 26th, and we go until 1:00 on Friday. Our guest speaker, who is Geneva gay, will be joining us 9:00 a.m. as our special speaker, 9:00 a.m. on the 26th, and then we have a series of workshops. And I do have an agenda available, if you would like it, so you can pick and choose which ones to attend. We basically will run three rotations every hour and a half, which is three different sessions, and you can choose which ones to attend, not to attend. You can have a lunch break and then come back and join us, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Maria.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Approval of agenda. Anybody wish to take anything out of sequence or delete? Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Schmidt.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, consideration possible approval of minutes of the regular Sparks City Council meeting for January 26th, 2015. Any changes? Okay, looking for a motion? Councilwoman Ratty.
No difference.
We have a second.
Second.
Not used to that thing over there.
Yeah, it's working.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? All in favor, or go ahead and vote. Passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, we don't have any announcements or presentations. Consent items. Anybody want to pull a consent item? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull consent item 8.2, please.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, looking for a motion to approve 8.1, 3, and 4. Councilman Lawson.
Move to approve items 8.1, 3, and 4.
Can we get a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Lawson and a second by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, Mr. Schmidt, 8.2.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that this falls in line with administrative items for the court, and my understanding is that we're still only responsible for a budget, and I know we're still trying to get the final agreements, but, you know, the courts are responsible for all their administrative decisions, and this is an administrative decision. I don't believe we should be voting on it.
Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, on behalf of the court. This is necessary to be on your agenda currently from the standpoint that the final rules on how money is spent by the court has not been brought through in the final decree. We are in the final stages of that. The reason this is here, this is an administrative, it falls into the city's normal rules for hiring outside professionals and providing a method for which to pay them, and at this point, we don't have any other way to do this. So, this is just, it's a normal business item that we've been doing for a long time. It is something that would go away once the decree's in place, but the reason it's here is that having a judge pro tem is very, very critical for the court to cover absentees or conflicts, and then by doing this, there's a list that they can officially pull from, and then this gives the court the authority to pay them accordingly, and that payment is currently going through us. So, this is something that we need until the decree's in place. I'll answer any other questions you might have.
So, under the current rules, this is okay to be on our agenda?
Yes, and it is necessary for it to be on our agenda for us to be able to pay the people that we're contracting with to do this service on behalf of the court.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Okay.
It's also part of our charter, as it stands now, section four. I kind of like this idea in that it gives me an opportunity to see who the pro tem judges are. I've only had to object to the court's selection, I believe, once in 22 years, but nevertheless, I think it's a good idea for our office to be able to review these pursuant to an agenda item. And if we have any problems with any of the individuals that the court is recommending as a pro tem, then we can voice it at that time, and it worked out very well last time. Steve, is this going to be, is the charter going to be amended to delete that particular provision? I believe it's section 4.20 sub A.
I would have to, Mr. Mayor, if I might respond to the city attorney, I would have to look at SB 111 that is currently in front of the legislature to see if that section's being changed. I don't know the answer to the question.
Yeah, the only fly in that ointment is that the charter specifically says that the pro tem judges will be presented by the court to the city council, and the city council will approve. However, it also says that the compensation to be made to those pro tem judges will also be established by the city council. So, that may be something that we have to look at again. In other words, I think that the Nevada Supreme Court has chimed in and said that we're really not supposed to set the salary of pro tem judges. I think we're still authorized to set the salary of municipal court judges, but nevertheless, we'll have to take a look at this, and I think Councilman Schmidt's raising this is very timely and will give us an opportunity to look at those legal and administrative procedures as well.
Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, yeah, now that you say it's in the charter, then that gives us some bound duties, I think, to go back to and say, but I disagree that the courts cannot do this if we don't approve it. They've hired their attorneys, they've hired all, you know, all kinds of services over there, or the courts without approval of this council or approval of anybody, any other. They have autonomy to do that, and they would have the autonomy to do that, too. Probably even with it in the charter, they would have the autonomy to do that, because we can set the salaries, but they can set how much money they want to spend for this, and there's nothing we can do about it. You know, I'm, part of me, part of the purpose of bringing this on up is to bring in front of the council this very slippery slope we're on, very slippery slope. It's going to, you know, these issues are looked minute one at a time, but when we start looking at budgets and things they hire and they do on over there, and the liability falls back on this council, all falls back, even after the agreement is all done, everything falls back on the council and the dollars at our taxpayer's funds. So, I just want to keep, I want to keep bringing these things back on up for everybody to understand that this stuff doesn't go away, and it's going to become very, very costly. So, thank you for that information.
So, what I'm hearing is, under the current rules and regulations that we follow under the charter, that this is our obligation to okay these pro tem judges?
As the way our charter stands now, yes, and as a follow post, as an additional postscript, I believe that the reason that this is in the charter to begin with is reflective of the traditional notion of checks and balances within any governing body, and that pro tem judges are nevertheless part of the judicial branch and are founders, or whoever created our charter. It's all fit that the city council should have a say in who is performing the judicial functions in the absence of a judge, and whether or not that has been eviscerated by the Nevada Supreme Court, whether or not our ability to control the funding for those pro tem judges has been diminished is something that we have to look at on a case-by-case basis, and once again, the fact that Councilman Schmidt is staying on top of these things, I think, will help us all to work through these.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ratty, your name was up there and it came off, did it?
It was just a mention.
Okay.
I have a comment, though. I would be more willing to table this, and let's discuss the money part of it, and I want some more information now. We spend nearly $300,000 fighting with the court, and I don't want to get into another fight that gets us spending more taxpayer dollars. So, I'd be happy with tabling it for now, until we have some more information on exactly what the charter says, on exactly how much, do we set the amount of salary for these pro tem judges, all of that stuff.
Ms. Ratty?
My concern would be delaying justice, so we're talking about pro tem for the calendar year 2015. It's already February of 2015. If you have a judge who's absent in these, or workload, I'm not sure exactly what kicks in when a, when a pro tem judge is asked to serve, but, you know, I understand that the lawsuit is uncomfortable, the lawsuit is messy. I understand absolutely what Councilman Schmidt is saying, that it is going to impact us in the long run, and I get that, but in the meantime, in this gray area before it's fully finalized and before our charter changes have made, I agree with the city manager's approach of continuing to put the things that we've always done on the agenda until we have those answers. And so, I'm not sure what more information on this particular item, which is basically just establishing the list. There's no more to it than establishing the list. There's no money, there's no anything else. We are just establishing the list. And to Councilman, sorry, just insulted you by making you a councilman, but to the city attorney's point, I don't, I don't believe, and I'm certainly not a lawyer, but I don't believe that anything in the lawsuit or the Supreme Court decision addressed this issue specifically, the appointment of judges. It was about finances, it was about staff, it was about those, those things. So, that, I don't know that we can hold up justice until all of those answers are resolved. It's not going to be something that staff can just bring us an answer in two weeks, I don't believe, unless staff says that they can.
Okay. One question for you, Chad, is, are there time restraints? Do we need to get this done, or it's coming to us at this time?
You know, there could be time constraints. I'm not all that familiar with the agenda item, but I would echo Councilwoman Ratty's concerns in that this really is not a big deal, whether or not, I mean, all we are doing is approving the names submitted to the city council by the municipal court for those individuals who will be serving in a pro tem capacity. This is something that the city council is, it's more form over substance, really. If the city council had a concern with anybody being presented to the, being presented to the city council as a pro tem judge, they could certainly voice that. If I had any concerns, I would voice that. I have absolutely no concerns over those individuals being presented by the municipal court to the city council to act as pro tem judges. I've worked with many of these attorneys, and they are very competent and very fair, and I think that the city will do well by having someone as the, as the proposed individuals are, serving on behalf of the municipal court. So, substantively, I don't have a problem with the agenda item. I was simply referring back with, or trying to assuage that any concerns that Councilman Schmidt may have about this particular item. I would agree with the city manager in that this does appear to be something that the city is obligated to do right now under the current charter. I don't see the lawsuit that went before the Nevada Supreme Court having any type of detrimental impact on our ability to do what we're doing today or the outcome of what we're doing today either.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bybee?
I would agree. I think, I think it's something that I would feel comfortable approving, simply these names that are being presented, but given that the settlement, or I'm not sure what term you use, for the, following, you know, the finalization of the agreement with the court is done, do we need to go back to the city charter after that and make changes? But, I mean, for right now, what the city charter says, I think, and having served on the charter committee, I feel like we need to abide by what the city charter is asking us to do right now, and if those change through our finalization of that agreement and the legislature, is something in, you know, Senate bill or something going to change that, maybe we address it then, but I think currently under what we're operating under, I feel comfortable with approving these and then looking at it later if things change for either of us.
Okay. Any more comments? Ms. Ratty?
As a member of the Government Affairs Committee, I will pledge that we'll take a look at this and make sure that if this question needs to be addressed specifically in our charter bill, that, you know, it's great that we're bringing it up, and I agree that it's great that we're catching each one of these, because they all have their own nuance. So, if this one needs to be addressed in the charter bill, we can take a look at that, and as Government Affairs, we will make sure that that happens, because there's time in this legislative session to make, make a change if we need to.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt?
And I guess that's going to go to where I'm coming from. I'm okay with approving this, we're in the charter, but I really want to know if we have people right now in Carson City arguing that we shouldn't be doing this. I mean, that's, that's where I like to see, have we even contemplated this yet? Or are we down there at a charter, we got a bill that's in right now that doesn't contemplate any changes with this? So, I think that relies on my decision. I don't know if we can, you know, hold this off to the end of the meeting, and we can get, you know, Adam or something to come back to us, that is this in the bill right now to go ahead and get changed or not? And then, then the second question is, do we want it changed or not? I mean, that's, that's a good question for the city council to address, based upon what Mr. Adams has said, this is something we want to fight for, or have we already agreed to give it up?
You know, I think that's for another discussion, to tell you the truth. I think we, with the rules we have now, I think we should probably... Mr. Schmidt, you pulled the item, so I'll leave it up to you if you want to make a motion.
My concern is that if we have people saying that we shouldn't be doing this, and then we're sitting here doing it. We have people, we have a bill right now saying we've agreed not to do this and pull it out of the charter, and then we're sitting here doing it now.
I think a lot of times you have to do with the information that you have at hand, and you can't, I don't know if it's in there or not, but speculating whether it's going to be in there or not is different.
For today's purposes, we all know there's lots of bills that go, might get down to Carson City that never get finalized. So, current state is, our charter is our charter. Now, again, I'm committed to working with Mr. Driscoll to find out about this and what our bill is, and to bring it back for conversation if we need to about what changes are made to the charter bill. But, current state, that bill may never pass. I mean, who knows what happens in this legislative session? So, I think we need to operate from the current state and then pay attention to what the legislative process is right now.
Okay. Mr. Adams, did you want to say something?
I agree with that. Whatever's in the proposed legislation concerning our charter is just that proposed, and that's one of the reasons that you cannot get an injunction against a legislative body when they are considering passing a law or an ordinance, because it's too speculative. So, regardless of whether it's in, who's arguing what in the Nevada legislature, regardless of what is in the proposed legislation, amending our charter, it's just that, it's speculative. It's certainly nothing that I think that the city council should use to either approve or reject this particular agenda item.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
This will be the last comment. I agree with you, under majority of circumstances, but this item, the bill that we have down there has already been agreed upon by attorneys on our behalf, has already been agreed upon to those changes, and that has cost the taxpayers $300,000 so far to get to that agreement. You know, we've sued ourselves, and it's cost taxpayers $300,000. We have an agreement that we've already agreed to in principle, sitting in legislation. That's, I think, puts a different light on things. If this was just an ordinary item, saying, yeah, we got something going on down in legislation, we still abide by the original one, but we've gone through two, three years, four years of court cases already on this thing, and we've agreed to something in principle to not to do things.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Chair?
I would, I would simply suggest that the fact that this was presented, the petitioner for this agenda item is the court, I would argue that they have waived any objection that they may have had pursuant to any prior agreement concerning that proposed legislation, and this is something that the court has certainly asked the city council to do, and I don't think that the status of any proposed legislation would, would be enough to create any further liability on the city's part.
Mr. Adams, is the list that's presented today, is it the same list as we had last year, or does it differ?
You know, I cannot recall Dean Hendrick being on that, or recall Mr. Tittle and Cheryl Field Lang. I almost said Cheryl Leiting, and that was, that was wrong, but Cheryl Field Lang was on it last year, and that's one of the reasons that I, I'm supporting this, is because I've worked with, with all these people. I think Mike Specchio is a, is a pro tem at the Sparks Municipal, Sparks Justice's Court, and he's got a long history being there. Lou Tittle is just a superb attorney as well, so I don't have any problem endorsing either or all of these individuals.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Schmidt, do you want to make a motion?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the list of attorneys as pro tem or judges for the municipal court.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Ratty and a second from Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes 4-1 with Mr. Schmidt. Are you abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay. Okay, 4-0 with an abstention. Thank you. Okay, moving on to 9.1. Consideration of possible purchase, well, I flipped it. Two slide-in sander brine applicator units from a Henderson manufacturing amount of $107,346. Mr. Corman?
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Ron Corman, Public Works Manager, for the record. Fleet Services is asking permission to spend $107,346, $107,346 to purchase two slide-in brine sander units in order to refurbish two of our current snow removal dump trucks that we use, trying to save a little bit of money for the fleet fund, do a refurbish rather than a replace. Answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve the purchase of two slide-in sander brine applicators from Henderson Manufacturing in the amount of $107,346.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Ratty and a second from Councilman Lawson. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Ron, and you are the next one also, aren't you?
No, there's one in between us.
Oh, you're in the one after that. Mr. Drinkwater?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michael Drinkwater, Treatment Plan Manager. You have before you a request to approve the reimbursement to the city of Reno for a consulting contract for materials testing and inspection services to support the Headworks Rehabilitation Project at the Truckemellows Water Reclamation Facility. You have previously approved the design contract with Stan Tech Consulting in October 2013 and the construction contract in January of this year, and this would be the construction management portion of the project. You have, in the scope of work before you in the staff report, and I apologize if it wasn't clear, in addition to the CM work, the construction management work, there was an overage on the design, and after a fairly rigorous review, staff is of the opinion that the extra design work was warranted, and so that money is to cover that design work is included in the current scope before you. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
So, I'm guessing the total scope of work was about $750,000?
Well, the original design, the original design contract was $633,000, and then with the overage of $80,000, that would be $710-ish.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve the reimbursement agreement of the city of Reno for the Spark share of the contract for consultation management service with Stan Tech Consulting, the amount not to exceed $263,139.72.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Don't want to forget the 2 cents.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilman Lawson and a second from Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Michael. Okay, 9.3, Ron's back. Consideration of possible approval to enter into a cooperative agreement with the state of Nevada and to accept the CMAC grant from the Federal Highway Administration through the state of Nevada in the amount not to exceed $125,000.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Ron Corman, Public Works Manager, for the record. I guess this is, Fleet Services is asking you to enter into a cooperative agreement with the state of Nevada and to accept a grant for $125,000 for the purchase of a cabin chassis for a truck that will be used to haul, basically, dumpsters, and we're going to make it a multipurpose vehicle, so it'll be able to haul sanding units, it'll be able to haul flatbed, dumpsters, so on and so forth. This item was on our replacement schedule for the 2015 fiscal year to replace a dump truck. The plan had originally been to go ahead and replace it with a hook lift truck, so that we'd have multipurpose, a multipurpose vehicle, and we were fortunate enough to be able to get some grant funding to help pay for this purchase that we had originally budgeted for in 100%. This is a 5% match grant. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, basically, we're just saving $125,000?
Basically, we're saving $125,000.
Okay. Questions, comments? Looking for a motion, please. Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve item 9.3, to enter into a cooperative agreement with the state of Nevada and to accept the CMAC grant from the Federal Highway Administration through the state of Nevada in the amount not to exceed $125,000 for the purchase of CMAC-approved equipment during the 2015 fiscal year.
Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Bybee and a second from Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
9.4, I believe this is you also, Mr. Corman?
Yes, sir.
Consideration of possible approval to enter into a cooperative agreement with the state of Nevada and to accept the CMAC grant from the Federal Highway Admin through the state of Nevada in the amount not to exceed $135,000 for the purchase of CMAC-approved equipment during the 2016 fiscal year.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Ron Corman, Public Works Manager, for the record. Again, this is a grant to purchase some equipment. In this case, it's a sweeper is what we're looking to purchase, a PM-10 compliance sweeper that is a little different than the sweepers that we currently own in our fleet. It's a little smaller of a variety that can be used in different applications. We were fortunate enough to be able to qualify for some CMAC money to purchase this sweeper. There is a 5% match on this. The reason why it is, the purchase is slated during the 2016 fiscal year is that this would be an addition to the fleet and was not budgeted in this current fiscal year. So with the approval of this, it will be budgeted into our next fiscal year, and the purchase will happen during the first half of our next fiscal year. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty?
I move to approve entering into an agreement with the state of Nevada to accept the CMAC grant in the amount not to exceed $135,000.
Second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ratty and a second by Councilman Lawson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. You're batting a thousand, Mr. Corman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's right.
Okay, public hearing. 10.1, second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on ordinance number 2509 amending ordinance 2284 to approve a Second Amendment Victorian Square Development Plan to the Sparks Town Center 2000 amended redevelopment plan and providing for other matters property relating thereto.
Mayor Pro Tem, Smith and members of the council, Armando Ornelas, city planner. This ordinance would amend the Town Center redevelopment plan, that's the redevelopment plan for Area 1, and specifically the 2005 Victorian Square Development Plan. The changes are basically fall into two categories. One amends the development plan, which I showed to you last time. It's this document in your packet. In particular, it allows for residential uses on this group of parcels here, 21 through 24, and allows for an office use on parcel nine. And that's intended to add some flexibility to the plan. By and large, we maintain the focus on a mixed-use project that we had in the 2005 plan. And then the second set of changes really address the implementation strategy for this redevelopment area. And in particular, they reflect the fact that we are, you know, much further down the line, 10 years of the last, it's a different world. And there have been changes in Nevada law, for example, that make it much more difficult for us to do site assembly. So one of the shifts and focus in terms of the implementation strategy is a move away from doing further site assembly and really working with the private property owners in terms of these subsequent phases of the project. For example, the parcels along the plaza or some of these parcels on the east side here. So those are the changes in a nutshell. I would certainly be happy to address any specific comments or questions that you may have. The amendments have been reviewed by the Sparks Planning Commission, and then this body acting as a redevelopment agency board reviewed them and recommended to the city council. And so basically, in order to affect the changes to the plan, the city council has to approve an ordinance, and that's what this is.
Okay, any questions or comments for Armando? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. This is a public comment item. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion. Ms. Ratty? I seem busy today.
I move to approve ordinance number 2509 as recommended by the Sparks Redevelopment Agency.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Ratty and a second by Councilwoman Bybee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Armando.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Gina Martini. He's in Carson City today doing some stuff at the legislator, legislation, legislature. Anyway, he saw we had a pretty easy agenda today, so he trusted it so he could leave. Okay.
He left the kids alone.
Do we need a closed-door session today?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, thank you. Comments? Comments from the council? Ms. Ratty?
I was privileged this morning to participate as the vice chair of the Health District Board in a new campaign called HPV Free Nevada. We are trying to raise awareness of the need for vaccinations to help prevent cancer. This is a vaccination that's not very well-known in our community, and Nevada has one of the lower rates of participation, and so we would like to change that. There was a very powerful presentation from someone many of you know, Abby Whitaker, who suffered a pretty devastating run with cervical cancer. Radiation, chemotherapy, almost lost her life, the whole bit, for the rest of her life will be at risk of a recurrence. And this is a cancer that is preventable through this vaccine. So if your child is 11, at least 11 years old, you want to ask your pediatrician about this vaccine, because obviously, most parents would not want to see their child grow up to have cancer. So it's just getting the word out there, gave everybody a button. So that is what this is about. It's taking off HPV Free Nevada.
Thank you, Ms. Ratty. Ms. Bybee?
Just a question to you, maximum age?
The idea is to have it before he becomes sexually active. So whatever that might be for that individual.
Okay, any more comments from the council? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion from Councilman Lawson and second by Councilwoman Ratty. Any further discussion? All in favor, or all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.